Now for this great community, we thank you now for the lives that have been impacted, the things that have gone forth, God. So now we pray a hedge of protection upon our community, oh God. We pray now for peace in our community, God, among citizens, God. We pray for peace in our community among officials, oh God. We pray for a spirit of unity, God, in that we can grow and become everything, God, that you have allowed our community to be before the worlds were ever established. And so now, God, we pray your blessing upon this community. We pray your blessing upon the leadership, those that are making decisions concerning our community. We pray that you would give them a godly wisdom that will be for the good of all people. And so we love you and we thank you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen, amen. Pastor, I want to take an opportunity to, I know you've only been here for a short while, and I want to take an opportunity to officially welcome you to the community. You already are doing great things. I was watching just last week, you was in revival, and so we saw it on Facebook, and you're already making an impact in our community. So I want to take an opportunity tonight to honor you and officially welcome you to our community.
Thank you.
Before we do the pledge, there may be some people here tonight for the zoning meeting. The zoning meeting will be held at the admin building. If you're here tonight for zoning, please go over to the admin building. Commissioner Henderson, if you would, lead us in our pledge, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could I just say one thing before we do pledge concerning Bethlehem Church? And what I wanted to say was that most people may know or may not know that Martin Luther King as an adolescent would come to Bethlehem Church with his uncle in revival. And Ms. Emma Jean Williams, who is still living, she and others would tell us that story about him coming down and how they would play and how he used to be back in the old timey days. And I thought that was just something that was a piece of history that we have here in Covington County that little, if anybody, only a few people know about it, and I thought that was great. And it speaks volumes for Bethlehem Church as it has been over years. Where everyone, please stand.
I plead the allegiance of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Commission, you had an opportunity to look at the agenda. I seek a motion, please. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason, all in favor. Pass is five to zero. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is item number five, citizen comments. This is an opportunity to allow citizens to come up and make comments about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. If you will come at this time, please state your name, your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. You may come at this time. Agenda topics only. Thank you. Next on the county manager's, I mean, I'm sorry, on chairman's report tonight. Tonight we have some representatives from BD, formerly Bard. Guys, if you would, if you would, please come tonight. Want to release a statement. I'm pretty sure that everyone knows what's been going on in the news, all over social media. Just want to take an opportunity to say when we heard about this, when we learned of this news, and I'm gonna let this young lady speak for herself, but when we learned about this news, we, Sunday night, we started calling the people who we felt like would be, that can help us get some answers. So I reached out to the governor's office, and I have been in contact with the governor's office through Mr. Tim Fleming. And the governor has assured us that he was working, dealing, dealing to find out any information that we need to know. He has reached out to the EPD, and we have reached out to our local health department. And I have been in contact with the mayor of Covington. And we are planning to get together and do a press conference. But we want to make sure we have all the people that it needs to be, needs to be there to make sure that we get the citizens of Newton County fully informed. But with that said, tonight, we want to invite you, ma'am. Thank you for being here. I didn't get your name. What's your name for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Ellen Kondraki, and I am Vice President of Environment, Health, and Safety for BD.
Okay. Thank you. If you would, please take a few minutes and talk to us, please.
Great. Thanks so much. First, thank you to the chairman and for the board for inviting us to be here tonight. We have issued a statement, which we've left at the door for folks to read through. And I'll just highlight some key points from that, and I would welcome any questions from the board after I make those comments. So first and foremost, as the head of EHS for BD, it is my personal responsibility to make sure that I protect the associates and the communities in which BD operates. That's something that I take very seriously as part of my leadership role within the company. I've been with BD for 14 years, doing environmental health and safety work in a number of roles over those years, and was involved in the integration of Bard when BD acquired them in 2017. The safety of our associates is first and foremost, and so I want to assure everyone here that we have been working for decades to safely sterilize medical devices. And the safety and the sterility of those medical devices is critical to ensure that patients are protected from infectious diseases. So ethylene oxide is one of the methods that we use to safely sterilize those devices. We have state-of-the-art equipment at our facility in the form of oxidizers that destruct 99.9% of emissions coming out of the main emission sources at BD. And we are continuing to constantly look at ways to reduce trace emissions that may come off the product. And that's what we're currently working with EPD on. So I want to clarify for those who have been reading some of the media reporting on this, that we have been working with EPD since December of 2018. At that time, we agreed to jointly do modeling with EPD, and that modeling was recently completed. And so we received a memo from EPD the last week of June, at or about the same time that the media also received that modeling report. And so we are assessing those results with all stakeholders involved. We have also been in contact with the mayor of Covington, Georgia EPD, and want to just reconfirm our commitment to working with all stakeholders to assess the risk and assure that we have all controls in place. So I'll just stop there and welcome any questions from the board.
So you are taking questions?
From the board.
Okay, okay. Commissions, we're gonna ask a whole lot of questions, but if you have a question that you want to address her with, anyone having a question? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. And this is, you're talking about a spill, sorry? Are you talking about a spill, a chemical spill?
No, no, I'm not. We're talking about air emissions that come from the sterilization of medical devices. These medical devices are sterilized in a sterilization chamber, and it uses ethylene oxide gas within a chamber. And those gases are vented to an abatement control system that destructs 99.95% of the emissions. We're required by law to destruct 99% of those emissions, but our equipment will take us above and beyond those requirements. After it comes out of the chamber, goes into an aeration cell. Those aeration cells are also vented to an abatement system. In any chemical operation, you might have trace amounts of emissions, and that's what we're talking about here. The Georgia EPD memo is very technical in nature. It talks about an acceptable ambient air concentration, which is a new risk level that EPA has recently been looking at. And so we're looking at the emissions from those trace amounts.
Okay.
So there's no chemical spills, no liquid gas.
Okay, so it's sound like emission into the air from board?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. And thank you for coming before us to take any questions tonight. First, let me say I look forward to, and I count on, I want to call it Bard still.
That's okay.
My grandmother worked there, by the way. But I want to, I look forward to you guys, the transparency and the side-by-side walk with our community going forward in terms of this, this whole incident. You said the trace emissions, trace, when you said trace emissions, does that mean after the 99.9% is removed, that's what's left is the trace emissions? Okay.
Yeah, so I'm referring to information in the Georgia EPD memo that was part of the media reporting. And in that memo, there is information about emissions that we self-report annually to the EPA as part of their toxic release inventory program. And in those emissions, you'll see emissions that we report coming out of the stack, the regulated point source, which is accounting for anything that the 99.995 doesn't destruct, in addition to a modeling of fugitive emissions, which is, which is something we do to account for the fact that we know how much ETA we use, we know that we're destructing 99.95% of it, and the rest is considered trace emissions.
And the last part of that is, do, and you may or may not be able to answer this for legal reasons, but do you, is it BND's position that since 2007, it was mentioned in the article, 2008, do you believe, is it BND's stance that those, those systems have functioned as designed to remove the entire time that they have functioned as designed?
Sure. We operate under an air permit that's issued by EPD, and that air permit requires us to do stack testing and other maintenance on that equipment on a regular frequency, and we're in compliance with our air permit.
Okay. Thank you. I was, I was born and raised within about 200 yards, up till I was about seven years old, within about 200 yards of that factory. So I have definitely a vested interest in this whole ordeal.
Of course.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. It's also, I understand about Bard, it's a little new to me, but just down the street, the, I can't think of the name of the plant, but they also had a chemical spill there too as well. So I mean, and for the community of Sellers Grove, it's just a whole lot, I think, to be, kind of be placed on that community. Not only are they getting in the ground, they're also possibly getting in the air too as well. And so I think both of those issues, especially the leaks from the two plants, it need to be addressed by EPA or somebody.
Sure.
At one point, they told that we didn't, when I had my discussion a few years back, they said that the board didn't have anything to do with it, and I disagreed with that.
So I would just say, I'm not aware of any spills from facilities that are not from BD Bard, so.
I can show you, because I know, I know what's going on.
Yeah. I just wanted to, and I trust, I trust the information is accurate. I just wanted to clarify that those spills were not from BD, the former Bard facility, and just reassure the board that we really do want to work collaboratively with, with the county commission, with the, with the city, and with EPD, and federal environmental regulators to look at the air emissions, considering this new information that's come to light through the new modeling.
Commissioner Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So how often is EPD monitoring? Is that, what is the frequency that they are?
When you say monitoring, can you clarify what?
Well, what is their frequency in terms of assessing your data?
Sure. So there's two things I'll say there. One, we are required by federal EPA under their TRI program, that's the Toxic Release Inventory Program, to self-report emissions once per year. And we do that, and that information EPA makes available through a database. The second one is through the air permit itself. We have permitting requirements that we are required to comply with, which we do. I can't speak specifically to the last time they were on-site, except for the meeting we held with them in December of 2018, where we reviewed the intention to do modeling beyond our air permit. So anything we did with EPD post-December 2018 up until now, when we got the modeling results, was outside of the requirements of our air permit. We are in full compliance with our air permit.
But, but you're only required to report yearly. There's not, how often are you monitoring internally?
Sure. Yeah. So the air permit requires a frequency by which we need to perform stack testing. So this is, and that stack testing is basically the method by which you'd confirm your destruction rate efficiency from your emissions control equipment. I don't, I'd have to pull up or ask my colleague here in the audience what the frequency is, but you basically have to do it on whatever frequency is in your air permit, and we can follow up with you on that requirement, or anytime there's a process change.
And so is that, is that influenced by air currents or any kind of, any external variables that would impact the way that, 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 those particles enter the atmosphere or enter the air?
Sure. We'd have to get, ask EPD directly, what are the local conditions by which they issue air permits? Because air permitting is a very localized activity. So I don't want to speak to you about the federal standard, because everything gets very localized in your air permit. But the air permit is primarily looking at the emissions abatement controls, and making sure you have best available technology, and that you're testing that technology on a regular frequency.
So this is what I would like to say to the rest of the board. If you look at the data from the community health assessment, Newton County has an extraordinarily high rate of breast cancer and a fairly high rate of lung cancer. That's not all related to emissions from, from industry. That's also impacted by, by emissions from automobiles and transportation and different, different types of air quality that would, even lifestyle. And so as we begin to look at this information, I think that we need, we have a responsibility as a board, even if BD is doing their monitoring and they are not, they are not the influencer here, we still have a problem, and we have to, we have to unpack what's causing that problem. Is it transportation? Is it, what are those other variables that are causing that problem? And so as we look forward to putting this group together, I think we have to continue to ask those questions, because the end result is that our citizens are being impacted. And it may not be a BD problem, it may be a problem for the community at large.
Anyone else? Thank you, ma'am. Can we, can you submit your business card for the record, please?
Sure, I'll have to get it for you.
Again, thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for giving us an update. But I want to say again to the citizens of Newton County, we are working with the governor, the EPD. And I think the governor has got Senator Brian Strickland involved. And I know Mr. Ricky, Ricky Dunn over at the EPD is involved, and we are going to be working with our local health department. And we're going to be trying to put together a, a press conference, partnering with the city of Covington. Me and the mayor spoke today for a while. We want to make sure that the citizens of Newton County know that they are safe, ma'am. So we greatly appreciate you.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the county manager's report. Again, guys, again, guys, let me say, if you're here for zoning tonight, please, please meet us at the admin building. If you're here for zoning tonight, please meet us at the admin building.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ryan, if you would, please pull up the slides. Let me go through these. We have a few slides for you tonight. I just want to go through them relatively quickly. Next slide. We've had 17 new hires in the last month, and we've had four separations. So we are filling many of the vacancies that we have currently. You'll take a notice here that primary residential, we've issued 44 permits, or 42 permits, I'm sorry, over the last month, with a total value of eight million, a little over $8 million. And you'll see we've had signed, 11 signed permits processed. Next slide, please. This is the public works recap for this past month. You'll see there were 95, in each of the districts there. District one had 95 work orders, two 78. District three, 43. District four, 31. And District five, 72. The L-MIG projects that we worked on, Westfield Way, Middleton Drive, Ellington Way, over in the silos of Ellington, 2011 Splosh, Chesapeake Chase, and, and the silos of Ellington, excuse me, Clear Springs and Northwood. And we have completed, just recently completed Northwoods subdivision. You'll see there under the 19 L-MIG, Lanella Parkway and Oaks Landing. So those are the paving projects we're on. We're in the, in the very thick of the paving season now, and we're on track to, to do close to 20 miles of paving again this year. Next slide, please. And this slide, I'm happy to report, is on Frieda Reed, who is our own director of the senior services. And she has been recognized, and she is the outstanding center director of the year for the state of Georgia. So we want to bring Ms. Reed up. She was, Ms. Reed was nominated for, Ms. Frieda, as everybody calls her at the center, was nominated for this award by Northeast Georgia Regional Development Council, and unbeknownst to her. So she was attending a conference in Savannah, and lo and behold, the announcement was made, and she's very much surprised and pleased, of course, and we're very, very proud of the work that she does, and very pleased that she's been, that she has been recognized for this. And she spent 19 years in the gerontology field. Now, we have, what, 400 clients over at the senior services, is that right?
Close to it.
And I know she's looking forward to getting the project, our expansion project underway. So we wanted to bring you here tonight. I know the chairman has got something for you to, to recognize you. I don't know if you want to say anything before?
I just want to thank everyone for just being supportive of our seniors. And I just fully believe that it's not me, it's us, it's we, it's our team. And if not for our team, then it would not be me. So they make my job very easy. And the, and the 398 seniors that we do have on road, they make our job very easy as well. And I'd just like to thank the commissioners and Newton County citizens for finally recognizing that seniors are important to Newton County. And we're so excited, we're so excited. Last couple of days, we've had people measuring walls and, and checking out the center and taking pictures and things. And so it looks like we got work in progress. And I want to say just thank you very much from the bottom of our hearts. And I want to thank my seniors that did come out, and those are in support of me today. Some of the seniors, if it starts to rain, they're not going to come. But they, they're so excited about what's going on at Newton County Senior Center. And I would like to say the Josephine B. Brown Senior Center, because that's what it's going to be called. I hope you let us keep that name once construction is finished.
Wow, wow. Amen. Well, listen, I just want to take an opportunity to say thank you. Laura and I often get the opportunity to come over and visit with you guys regularly now, because y'all are doing so much. And the last time we was over there, we was doing some kind of dance, I think we were doing. It was just, you know, y'all have so much we've got, got to run over to zoning right quick. It's 7:30 on the dot, so, Ms. Judy, fun over there, and I think you're doing a great job, along with your staff. My mom just, she joined, and she is, you know, I can't even catch her at home anymore. I'm is you here? There she is. If you would, please come tonight. like, Mom, where you at? You know where I'm at, you know where I'm at. I'm like, wow, it's just, it's just crazy. So she's been stuck in the house for so long, and now every other day, she's over at the center. So I just want to thank you for the job that you're Good evening.
The agenda item before you this evening is a request to amend a development agreement
doing. And we got a token of appreciation here that we want to present to you and just
with the Facebook project that we have out in Stanton Springs. The merit of the change
say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
is to amend the square footage from 2 million square feet to 2,500,000 square feet. I believe that is the basis of all the changes. I don't think there's anything else. And staff does request that the board consider this favorably and address the amendment.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The obvious question is, so this, this increase in square footage will be spread across all the buildings. Is that correct, or is this one, one building?
Well, when the original footprint came in, it was proposed for five buildings, and each building was a half a million square feet each. When the development agreement was written, it referenced the five buildings, but it only referenced 200, 2 million square feet. So this is for the full development, which would be, again, the five structures. We have two structures that are currently, well, very close to CO, actually. And then they are looking to move forward with the third structure. And, and again, the amendment would just allow what their original site plan showed. But when we drafted the development agreement, it just omitted a half a million square feet that was, was proposed from the beginning.
All right. And the second half of that question is, were the pilot payments calculated based on 2 million square feet or 2 million, 2 and 1/2 million square feet?
2 million square feet.
So our pilot payments will increase based on that square footage?
Correct.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Anyone else? Thank you, thank you. This is a portion that we allow of our court, our public hearing, for the applicant and those that want to speak in favor. You have 10 minutes to do so. If you would, please come at this time. State your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone want to speak in favor tonight? You may come at this time. Anyone want to speak in favor tonight? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow 10 minutes for those that want to oppose. If you would, please come tonight. You also have 10 minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone want to oppose tonight? Anyone want to oppose? That portion of our public hearing is closed. Commissioners, I seek a motion, please. Commissioner Edwards?
Motion approved as stated by the county zoning, planning and zoning director.
It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you. Now we're going to return back to our county manager's report. Mr. Kerr, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. At this time, the final part of my report, I'd like to ask James Brown, who is our water resources director, to come up and
and those that want to speak in favor, you have 10 minutes to do so, if you would, please come at this time, state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone want to speak in favor tonight? You may come at this time. Anyone want to speak in favor tonight? Thank you, that portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow 10 minutes for those that want to oppose. If you would, please come tonight, you also have 10 minutes to do so, please state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone want to oppose tonight? Anyone want to oppose? That portion of our public hearing is closed. Commissioners, I seek a motion, please. Commissioner Edwards?
Motion approved as stated by the county zoning, planning and zoning director.
It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes 5 to 0, thank you. Now we're going to return back to our county manager report. Mr. Kerr, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, the final part of my report, I'd like to ask James Brown, who is our Water Resources Director, to come up, and he's going to give you a short briefing and update on where we are with the projects out at the Cornish Creek Water Plant.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Recently, we put out a request for proposal for general contractor and engineering design using a progressive design bill method. The reason why we chose this method is that it's an open book method, that we can actually see the components that's going to be associated, all the items that's going to be associated with the project, we can just see all the way down to the, to the scent. What it also allows us to do is to have the design team and the general contractor at the table during the design phase, which will save us time and money. With a collaborative effort with the consecutive partners, doing the interview process, question and answer, as the selection team has made a decision to select the Crowder Construction Team and Hazen Team as the contractor for the project, tonight I have Mike Powers and Mark Dixon here with me from Crowder. So from this point, we have, we're drafting up the contract that will be brought to the board for consideration at a, hopefully, sometime next month.
Any questions, Commissioners? Thank you. Thank, thank you, sir, thank you. James is doing a wonderful job. I see some members of Newton, Newton County Ward and Sew Authority here to support James tonight, so I think I see Mr. Hopkins, and I think Mr. Haney as well. So James is doing a wonderful job, sir, we greatly appreciate what you do. I think that's it for the county manager report.
Yes, sir, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tonight, on the consent agenda, Commissioner Schultz, Commissioner Schultz has an appointee tonight for the library board. You want to recognize your appointee?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Melissa Jo Foyer has graciously agreed to serve on the library board. Melissa is in the back with her husband Sam, and when I asked Melissa if she would serve, she said, oh, I love the library, I'm so excited to do this, so, thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, ma'am, for your willingness to serve, we greatly, we greatly appreciate you. Commissioners, I seek a motion that we approve the consent agenda tonight.
Some of?
It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and seconded by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes 5 to 0, thank you. Next, on the agenda tonight is the finance discussion. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a resolution before you tonight, and this is consideration of Resolution R 072319, and this is a resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners approving fiscal year 2020 appropriations to entities conferring substantial benefits to the citizens of Newton County, and I'll read through the resolutions. Whereas the Constitution of the State of Georgia, approved by the voters of the state in November of 1982, and effective July 1, 1983, provides an article, in Article 9, Section 2, Paragraph 1 thereof, that the governing authority of the county may adopt clearly reasonable ordinances, resolutions, and regulations, and, pardon me, whereas Newton County, like all other county and municipal governments in Georgia, is limited by the state constitution of the Georgia Code and how public funds can be used. One of the principal restrictions is the gratuities clause of the Georgia Constitution, and whereas there is no gratuity or violation of the gratuities clause when Newton County receives a countywide substantial benefit in exchange for a budget appropriation, and whereas the Newton County Board of Commissioners recognizes the substantial benefit of working with community partners and the worthy causes they pursue that are highly beneficial to the citizens of Newton County, and whereas the following entities appeared before the Newton County Board of Commissioners to seek budget appropriations for fiscal year 2020, those being Macintosh Trail ECD Council, Inc., Newton County Recreation Commission, Newton County Community Partnership, Nelson Heights Community Center, Newton County Board of Health, Washington Street Community Center, Newton County Library System, Viewpoint Health, Covington Newton Chamber of Commerce, excuse me, Newton County DFAX, Alcove Casa, Inc., Highway 278 CID. Whereas the Newton County Board of Commissioners finds that the aforementioned entities confer countywide substantial benefits to the citizens of Newton County, and whereas the Newton County Board of Commissioners wishes to provide appropriations to the aforementioned entities as part of the fiscal year 2020 budget. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia as follows. One, the Newton County Board of Commissioners finds that the following entities service, entities services confer a substantial benefit to Newton County citizens. Macintosh Trail ECD Council, Inc., Newton County Recreation Commission, Newton County Community Partnership, Nelson Heights Community Center, Newton County Board of Health, Washington Street Community Center, Newton County Library System, Viewpoint Health, Covington Newton Chamber of Commerce, Newton County DFAX, Alcove Casa, Inc., Highway 278 CID. Two, the Newton County Board of Commissioners hereby approves budget appropriations for fiscal year 2020 to the aforementioned entities providing community-wide services to the citizens of Newton County, so resolved this 23rd day of July 2019, Mark, Newton County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Schultz?
I was going to make a motion.
Thank you, ma'am.
I move for approval of Resolution R 072319.
Thank you, sir. It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and seconded by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask legal, are, do we, is it of your professional opinion that we are compliant with all state and local statutes and ordinances for the, as they pertain to these appropriations?
Yes, sir, I'm actually the one that drafted this last year, I believe it was last year. Lloyd, is that when we started doing this, calling out the external appropriations? So we use this format now, but one of the things that I think is so important about that is there's a requirement that they come before the board and update, to let us know how they're using those funds and how it's working out. So that will happen in conjunction with the resolution as well, but yes, I felt very comfortable that we're well within our legal means to give those external funds.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes 5 to 0, thank you. Next on the agenda is item number 11, GIS, minor changes to the GIS fee schedule. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are requesting that there be a couple of minor changes to the fee schedule. The first change is the, an increase in the
Come on, guys.
Per hour labor charge from 20 to $25 an hour, which better reflects the salaries of the individuals and the time that it take, involved in their production, in their work production. And also, we're requesting the change that any LiDAR data set be, would have to, would have to be 128 gigabytes versus what we currently put it on as a 64 gigabyte flash drive. So, we're requesting that those two changes be made, and then the date of the fee schedule be, pardon me, updated from 2018 to July 17, 2019.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I seek a motion, please. Commissioner Cowan?
I make a motion to approve the changes to the GIS fee schedule.
It's been motion by Commissioner Cowan and seconded by Commissioner Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes 5 to 0, thank you. Next is the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, Mr. Kerr, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You all will recall that back in May, the Scott Sirockin came to you with, and that requested to, permission to proceed with an RFP to hire a closeout consultant for the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. We knew at that time that there would be some additional funding that would be needed, and so the vote was delayed in order for us to try to determine how much of the admin funds that we had from the program that were left and what would be needed. What we have found out is that it's very, very difficult to find out how many, much of the admin funds are left, and then there's a question as to whether or not funds that we have paid to Habitat for Humanity for processing and so forth would be considered admin funds, and if that would be subtracted from what the balance would be. So, we did consult with our attorneys, and we've been advised that, at this point, it would be best if we did not use those admin funds, because the difficulty in determining how much, what they are, for one, and the fact that there's a lot, seems to be a lot of confusion at DCA regarding this program. So, what we are asking is that the board approve a transfer from the contingency fund of $25,000, so that we can hire a consultant to close the NSP program out.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question I have, Lloyd, is, is there, is there any part that we, that we might know, how much do we have in the funds that we're supposed to have, that we don't have access to?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to ask Scott Sirockin to come up and address that for you, Commissioner. Thank you.
So, your question was, do we have any sense of how many?
Correct, correct.
I have to say at this point, not really, but just the, the questions that have come up, it, it could be none, it could be the same amount that we've been discussing, around 10,000. I, I think the key thing I would want to communicate to the board is that whatever amount is remaining, we'll have other opportunities to make use of it. We won't, if we don't use it for the consultant, it's not like we miss out. We, we can always ask to be reimbursed for staff time, or legal fees, or, or other things that we've, monies we've already spent, so we're not going to miss out on those administrative fees. We just are having a hard time communicating with DCA and getting an understanding of what that amount is.
Commissioner, Commissioner Schultz?
So, we're going to hire a consultant and spend $25,000 to deal with DCA, who doesn't know what they're, who doesn't have any clue, so why are we spending the money at this point if DCA doesn't have, I mean, why is it essential to do that now? If they, if they're not, if they're clueless?
I wouldn't quite characterize them as clueless. I think they're just understaffed and overburdened and not able to work with us in a timeframe that meets what we need to accomplish right now. It's just very slow, the communication, because they really only have, as far as I could tell, a couple of people working with the entire state, all the NSP programs that are out there. Why we need to do it now, and this is some new information that literally, I had a phone call this afternoon, just a few hours ago, DCA is under a mandate from HUD to close out all their programs by this time next year. So July 2020, we need to be finished with this. And our, the consultant process between procurement and letting them have enough time to do the review of our information, it's probably going to take about three months. And so that only leaves us nine months to go through the closeout process with DCA, and we see how slowly things move with DCA. We want to make sure we're leaving ourselves enough time to meet that deadline. Does that answer your question?
Well, that's helpful, but it's still, it just, it's troublesome that we have to spend money that potentially we could have in our accounts, because DCA is disorganized.
I think too, as Scott mentioned, there's, as the program has aged, let me put it that way, the resources that were put towards the program diminished, just diminished on a regular basis. So for a while there, there was nobody in DCA that was working with this program, and that's unfortunate. Now there are some staff people there, but because of the nuances and quirks that were in this program, it's really to our advantage to hire a consultant to do the closeout for us, because of the complexities of the financing and the funding of the program, and these administrative costs, for instance, too. So it, it's really to our advantage to have somebody who understands the program thoroughly, and can help us wade through all of the, the federal issues that we need to go through, as, you know, as well as with the state. There were a lot of strings attached to this money, I think as you probably know, and processes that had to be followed, that we don't normally, that are really above and beyond what we would normally do when we contract for something, so. It is, it's unfortunate, but because of the complexity of the program, it's really to our advantage, so that we get an accurate accounting, so that we don't come up a few years down the road, and there be some audit that would show where we misspent money, thinking that we were doing it correctly.
So this program is, we did this in 2010, correct? We originally started it in 2009, and then it really ramped up in 2010. It's like a, I mean, the, it was fairly, we, we had a lot of organizations, I mean, Scott has been involved from the very beginning, and he, I can tell you, he dotted every I and crossed every T all along the way. It's just that DCA tended to keep moving the goalposts. And, and so it's been a problem with the clarification from them from the very beginning.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
What's frustrating is that now we have to come out of a contingency to pick up the pieces from another state agency, from another government agency.
I would clarify that a little bit. We dotted the Is we knew about, we crossed the Ts we knew about, but no one on staff had ever done a program like this before, as Lloyd said, above and beyond anything we were familiar with.
What was a brand-new program?
Well, it was based on other housing, similar housing programs, but not, new for us. And so I look at, yes, 25,000 out of contingency, I wish we didn't have to do it, it's not a small number. I really see it as an investment to protect ourselves, and I would argue our experience with DCA is a reason to make that investment, not against making that investment, because ultimately, if DCA told us the wrong thing every time they communicated with us, it's still our responsibility. We'll be the ones held accountable for any mistakes that were made. And so, I wish DCA had been able to help us more, I agree with that, but ultimately, we're the ones holding the bucket. And so I think we need, we, we need, my viewpoint is, we need to invest in getting some help to finish out the program, or else we could be looking at paying a lot more if there are findings issued against us for things we didn't know to do correctly.
So the last question that I have is, so, how much do we have in contingency?
Since we started the new
In this new fiscal budget? I was, it wasn't very much.
I'm sorry, well, I don't have the exact number, and I'm, I'm sorry, my memory is not what it has been in the past, but I believe that we
I'm sorry, Lloyd, the, the budget amendment request that Finance Verified says we have 5,400, 549,014 currently in contingency.
In the contingency.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you.
And that's before subtracting the 25, if that's what the board decides to.
Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to ask specifically, what
So, I just wanna ask specifically, what tasks will the consultant actually engage in? Is it, are they a part of DCA? Do they know the DCA guidelines and standards so that they're able to ensure that there are no additional findings? Like, what specifically will this consultant be able to do to assist us where we know that this is a great investment for us?
So, it'd be a third party, not anyone involved with DCA, but we've vetted a few potential vendors who have experience working with NSP recipients like us. So, they would be familiar with the rules and regulations. And what we've asked them to do is two broad things. One is to look at DCA's closeout manual and other applicable rules from HUD and DCA and review our files to make sure we follow the correct processes and that we have documentation to show we followed the right processes. Because it doesn't matter what we did, if we can't prove we did it, it won't count. And then the second broad thing is whether they find any issues or not, to make themselves available to us as we work with DCA on the closeout process in case they have questions or identify things that seem questionable, that we would have the consultant as a reference and guide to say, here's the best way to respond to this if DCA does question things. Now, I think I've said this the other times I've been here and I'll emphasize it again, the consultant can't guarantee there aren't any issues. What they can help us with is documentation of what was done. If we completely missed something seven years ago, it's too late. We can't fix that now, consultant can't fix that now. But, they can help us with making sure our files are in the right format and have the right contents to where if we did do things correctly, we can prove it to DCA and move on.
And so, this 25,000 is just for the RFP? It's not for what we would have to actually pay the consultant?
No, this involves, this is our estimate of what the full cost of the consultant's work would be.
Okay.
Yeah, there's really no cost to do the RFP.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson and then Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you. I can, I can remember when we first started on this particular grant, we had a joint session and Nancy, you corrected me from wrong, we had a joint session with City of Covington and then Chairman Morgan, she told us that she had received, or we were receiving a grant that was gonna buy some of the old foreclosed homes in communities and fix them up and resell them at a, at a low rate to peoples and, and that, you know, it would, it could, the grant was possible to move into maybe the cities or Covington, wherever, and do a whole lot of what we, what I thought, or what we thought was good at the time. But, little did we know that once we had started on the project, there was foreclosures, there were people leans on the houses, there were lots with taxes on them and it was a whole lot of stuff. And then I think the nonprofit organization that were doing it, they had built a park, I think it was paid something like a hundred thousand dollars for it and it only had asphalt running around it and a little bit of a, of a top lot. And it just kinda really made me feel, feel kinda bad. And now we're stuck with, taking, once again, we're stuck, we're taking money out of contingency that I think most of us, and I know Commissioner Schultz have always spoke about. She said, well, you know, we need to kinda reserve our contingency and once again, we're taking out a few thousand dollars out of here to pay on some, some old debt or something that we still don't know what not, that's gonna be an end to it, to the bleeding over that project. But, the question that I wanted to ask, and there were some lots over there, so what ever happened to the lots that I think we were supposed to have had, that we may possibly could have sold? What happened to them?
Those lots are still there. There's four, is that right, Scott, over in?
You're referring to the lots in Fairview Estates?
Fairview Estates, yeah.
So, we purchased what was gonna be a new phase of that subdivision and used some of the acreage to build a park, puppet park. There are a few individual lots that we purchased as well, but because we used NSP dollars to purchase them, the only way we can use those is to meet NSP activities. So, if the board wanted to use those lots to build houses, we could continue the program, but I don't think I've seen any appetite for doing that from the board. So, I, there, maybe one day if we have some money, we could expand the park, that's probably the only realistic thing we could do with that land.
Okay, so, we just couldn't, if somebody wanted, you couldn't, just couldn't sell them?
Maybe we'd have to talk with our attorneys, maybe if they had a contract with us that they would do something that met NSP guidelines. But, again, we'd be responsible ultimately, and I, it wouldn't be my recommendation.
Okay. Ms. Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott, and Megan, help me out with this a little bit. These are federal funds administered through the Department of Community Affairs to the local governments to purchase neighborhood dilapidated housing, people that walked away, stabilize neighborhoods. I handled that for the city and most of ours got directed to Walker's Bend to stabilize that neighborhood. I think the county at that time, y'all elected to do multiple variable locations all around the county, is that, is that right? Or did y'all just have one?
No, we had several.
Y'all had several places, right?
The bulk of the money, especially because of the park, went towards Fairview Estates. But, you may remember HUD had a mandate of spending a certain amount of the dollars, I don't remember now, off the top of my head, by a particular date. And, at least at the beginning of the program, we had to have the property appraised and then we could only offer 90% of the appraised value. And even during the recession, not every bank was interested in accepting less than the appraised value. And so, we, we had certain census tracts where we could administer the program and really we just bought the houses that we could negotiate a deal on. I wish we could have concentrated that more in one area, but-
In this situation, we've got federal funds, we've got a process we've gotta jump through, just like when we had the airport, FAA funds out there, we had to make sure that those funds were properly accounted for because you've gotta report this back to the feds, is that right? Those rules are really strict and this is a, this is part of your exit strategy to bring a consultant in, because once he comes in, identifies everything that we may have right, wrong, whatever, he gives a report and then we're gonna know exactly if there's additional money that we have to pay or we have, we have any money left, I don't even know. But, to make sure that all documentation is correct, because we don't want to be in trouble with the feds, is that right?
Exactly.
Or the state.
Or the state, yeah.
Okay, I'm good.
Anyone else? So, Commissioner-
I'm sorry, but, and I hate to do this, but there's more to that conversation I had this afternoon that I need to make you aware of. So, this conversation was with our field representative, who I've never talked to before today. So, keep in mind, she's not familiar with our situation, but as I explained what we were doing in terms of looking at a consultant, she said, well, you know, I'm not sure that's really necessary. So, I felt I had to present to you, even though it hasn't changed my opinion that the consultant's in our best interest, at least her initial thought was, she didn't see it as something we needed to do. Now, I explained a little bit about why I had concerns and had brought this idea to the board and she said, I'm gonna go talk to the director of the department, who is, he's been there the whole time, he is very familiar with our situation, and they'll get back to us with some more clarity and guidance. So, my thought, if the board does want to move forward with this budget amendment and issuing the RFP, is that we do so. There's language in the RFP that says county reserves the right not to award a contract if that's what we decide is in our best interest. So, it won't tie our hands, but at least it lets us get the process moving. And then, once we get some more information from DCA, I can communicate that to the board and you can have another opportunity to make a decision.
Commissioner Schultz?
So, is this Glenn you've been talking to?
Not today, this was a different person, but yes, Glenn.
So, what would be the harm in us tabling this tonight, giving you the opportunity to talk, for her to reach out to Glenn and then bring this back to the board on the August 6th meeting? That way, I mean, because Glenn's been there from the very beginning.
There's two things. One, it delays us another few weeks and although I wasn't aware of it until today, time appears to be of the essence. The other thing is, I'll be out of town on the 6th. Now, I'm happy to try and Skype in or something, but I wouldn't necessarily be here to answer questions or things like that.
What do you mean, time is of the essence? What are we against?
To meet that July 2020 deadline for finishing closeout.
So, will you be here-
Which DCA just communicated to us today.
Can, can, so, will somebody else be available to handle this for you if we table this tonight? I think, yeah, I think we can.
We could probably, we could probably do that.
I would like to make a motion to table it until at least the August 6th meeting.
It's been motioned that we table this by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, it's tabled until, I think, August the 6th, is that right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Next on the agenda is senior services. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What you have before you is an agreement between the county and Northeast Georgia RDC through their division, their area agency on aging. This agreement between provides for money to be provided to our senior services center to provide for meals on wheels and, and other meals for seniors as they, as they come in. It also provides for an array of other services as well, if, transportation and so forth. And this is an agreement that we've had for a number of years with Northeast Georgia.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I seek a motion, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any discussion, please? All in favor? Pass is five to zero, thank you. Our next on the agenda is animal control. Mr. Kerr?
Pardon me, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are requesting that the board approve a new fee schedule for our animal control adoption fees primarily. You'll see in your side pocket, you have a summary of all of the changes. The most significant are the changes in the adoption rates and then there's a change in the euthanasia fee. Ms. Wyman is here tonight to tell you a little bit about this and I'll just ask if she can come up to the board, to, there she is, and explain some of the need for the changes. One of the things I know that she's gonna mention is that the adoption fees, if we moved to the new rate, we would be able to include microchipping and sterilizing the animals before they're adopted, which would go a long way in helping us to control the population of the animals.
Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Most of you remember from the last time I was here, this is Elizabeth Bergner and she is from Plant Pet Hood of Georgia. The first grant that was written, that was from Matty's Fund, which was $5,000 to assist in the sterilization, has now been used up. We've got one more bus that's leaving tomorrow, but during that time, 107 animals have been sterilized and removed and brought back to Newton County, already sterilized with any of those that were old enough also having a rabies vaccination. Additionally, 87 animals were transported on this bus that were transferred to other rescue groups in the Atlanta area. Many of those rescues could not have made the trip to Newton County. So, this program has been very, very beneficial. Plant Pet Hood of Georgia was kind enough to also apply for a second grant that they recently received from Best Friends Animal Society and National Animal Welfare Group and they received $48,000 to benefit Newton County. That's a huge sum of money, excuse me, but it does require a $40 copay per animal. What I am proposing is that we raise our adoption fees by $30 because we are already profiting $10 on every animal that is adopted through our microchip fees that we still, that we implemented last year. So, I would like to propose that we would allow that money to go back to the potential adopters through the adoption fees, so that fee of raising it to $30, raising the adoption fee to $30. Additionally, with this program, we could also offer the, the $40 additional fee to anybody who's reclaiming their animal from Newton County if it's not already sterilized. That would again include the rabies vaccination and the sterilization. That is, would be a great benefit to the residents of Newton County whose animal unfortunately has gotten out of their fence and wound up in the animal shelter. The other fee that I'm requesting an increase is in the euthanasia fee. It takes a good bit of staff time to intake and do all the paperwork for, and keeping track of all the DEA logs and those types of things to, for euthanasia fees. So, I mean, requesting a $10 increase in the euthanasia fees.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, I mean, anybody, Ms. Kerr, before we call?
I would just like to acknowledge the grant and Ms. Bergner and her help and all, because it is a, one of the most significant problems we have in the county is the fact that we have a major number of animals who are not spayed or neutered and if, if the intention's not, you know, someone, we wind up with a lot of stray cats and then we wind up with a lot of stray dogs as well. And the best way to control that really is to, is through sterilization, because it's, it, it does become a problem and will continue to be a problem. The more populated we become, the more that the animals do come along with their owners. And so, I think this is a great move and we really appreciate their willingness to partner with us and help us in that, in that effort.
I would hate for you to come away from, I think you said Palmetto?
Duluth. No, I came from Duluth.
Without being able to say something, so, you'll take an opportunity to say-
Thank you very much, Commissioners and Mr. Kerr. He is correct, the, the spaying and neutering is key in keeping the animal population down. I wanted to point out that the main reason that Newton County was targeted for this activity on the part of our nonprofit and the main reason that we were able to obtain this grant money for Newton County is because you have a very valuable asset in the animal control shelter right now. Cindy Wyman's reaching out to us for help with the rescues and getting animals out alive has been a huge boon and it's what's gotten us into this county. Now that we have funding from another major US funder, we wanna continue it past the one year that this grant will go. And the $30 increase in the adoption fee still keeps you in line with the surrounding counties' adoption fees. We did a study of 15 counties contiguous to Newton as well as the metro, the major, the big guys in metro Atlanta. And right now, you are competitive with the ones who do not sterilize and with this $30 increase, you'll still be very competitive, in fact, $3 below the average of the ones that do sterilize prior to adoption. So, we're still keeping you competitive with surrounding counties that provide similar services.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you for being here. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Henderson, I didn't see you, I'm sorry, Commissioner Schultz?
I just need to, I need some clarity. So, I'm looking at this analysis and right now, we pay, the adoption fee is $45 for dogs and $30 for cats. and $30 for cats.
Correct.
So the adoption fee then for dogs will be $75?
Correct.
Okay, because it says here 46, 67, and I'm, I'm, okay.
No, that's, that's the average.
So it'll be $75, $75 for dogs, and then $60 for cats.
That's correct.
And then the reclaiming fee, you're, I don't see where that's on here.
That would not, the reclaim fee would be the same, but we could offer the $40 for the sterilization to the people reclaiming, but it's not required. So it would, would just be some, a service that we could offer to the people, but it's not required.
And then, is it $10 for the microchip, or is it an increase of $10?
Currently, we pay $10 for each microchip, but we charge the adopter or person reclaiming $20 for this chip, and so that's why I'm asking that that money be put back into the animal to benefit the residents of Newton County.
And the euthanasia fee?
That's just basically because of increased costs.
But what is that, what will that fee now be?
Oh, $50 for a dog and $40 for a cat.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson. And Commissioner Mason.
Thank you. I, I guess, so you're saying it, it costs $10 euthanizing an animal? I'm, I'm asking, because.
To figure the complete euthanasia cost, and I believe I addressed that in an email to you after the last meeting, and I believe I have that email with me where we, I did discuss the exact cost. But it, the cost of the actual medication is minimal, but the staff time and intaking and processing all the paperwork.
I, I just, when you were saying euthanization, you said $10. I was just thinking about, I think the email that, you should have read it to him on the phone, it says something like 63 cents per, maybe per pound or something, but I remembered it was something like 63 cents. And I was, how in the world you do all that with 63 cents? And so it's, it kind of rang me up, kind of where we need to be.
What I'm requesting is a $10 increase in the euthanasia fee, and that is a service that we do provide to the residents of Newton County for people who have a animal that may be very old or debilitated. It is still considerably less than any veterinarian would charge, so we do offer that as a service for people who have a animal that, for whatever reason, they.
Yes, ma'am. So it doesn't cost you that merge, or us that merge to euthanize the animal, say maybe at the shelter. It doesn't cost us $10?
Not a material cost, but if you figured all the labor costs involved with that, it would.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just trying to, I want to get a little clarity on the copay. So we're getting $10 profit. I think you mentioned the $10 profit from the.
Microchip.
Microchip. And then the $30 increase, so is that $40 going to cover that copay? Or is this?
Yes.
Okay, great.
The terms of this grant require a $40 copay.
Okay, so that $30 increase and that $10 profit that we're going to put back in will cover that $40 copay?
Correct.
Thank you.
It truly is a, a huge benefit to the residents.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioners, I seek a motion tonight. Thank you, guys, for being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approving? Okay, thank you, sir. It's been motioned that, by Commissioner Edwards that we approve, and second by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion? All in favor? The pass is five to zero. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next is item number 15, county manager, presentation on the utilities. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packets, you'll see some information from ATA Inc., it's Alexander Tomas and Associates. Mr. Tomas approached us several months ago about our interest in having our utility bills audited for, to make sure that we were being billed correctly according to our consumption. And so I have asked him to come here tonight to tell you a little bit about his program and how it works and what he does. I will tell you that I have contacted the references that he provided, and they seem to be pleased with the results that they have. What I'm seeking tonight is some direction on whether to move ahead with further discussions with Mr. Tomas to, to find out if the board is interested in us pursuing this service.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Tomas, thank you.
Welcome tonight, sir.
My name is Alex Tomas, and we're a local company, Alexander Tomas and Associates, is ATA Inc. We've been in this business 29 years and become somewhat of an expert in our field. We've worked with Walmart, Publix. A lot of those companies have hired us to actually come in behind their staff and make sure that they're paying correctly and accurately and at the best rates. We've performed those services successfully for all of them, but we, we're not just consultants. We also employ our own technology in-house that houses our audit process and reviewing the bills monthly. You guys think you have 250 accounts or more monthly, and each of those accounts has a number of variables on them and consumptive, consumption on them that can often go out of alignment. And without a process, a formal process to review that data every month, you're probably going to overpay. I mean, we, we typically see, from an audit perspective, at least one and a half to 2% in refunds, anywhere from 7% to 10% in rate reductions. And more importantly, as we go forward and we look at the, the continuum of really getting tight and managing these expenses, is the, the consumptive review every month. And, and that can amount to anywhere from 15% to 20% a year. You'd be surprised how much boilers being left under in summer and things like that. And those are things we, we catch quite readily. And we've even talked down the line, and I'm, I'm not trying to get ahead of myself, but this is kind of the journey, if you will, and I take all my clients on this. We crawl first, and later, you know, we start to walk, and we really tighten the noose around expenses when we start managing real-time data. Your building, operation, HVAC, much of this operates with energy controls, and you might say, well, this, it's all automated. Well, you know, what can there be? But there are many mishaps with the software programming. The sensors go bad. You can have equipment cycling on and off, and, you know, air conditioning compressors nowadays could be anywhere from $10,000 to $40,000. And, and those types of things, again, as we get down the road, we're very equipped to handle, and we have our own proprietary technology that's second to none. It really is. But back to the, the very beginning, which is the audit process, that's all contingent-based. There's no upfront cost to you, and the advantage it gives you is that as we set all that data up in our system and our platform, that, that would typically cost a lot of money to get to the next step, which is managing consumption. There would typically be a sizable setup, but since we're doing the consulting, if you do want to get to that next step, you could do so very cost-effectively with no setup. And, and there's very few to none that offer that, so. And we, we like to pride ourselves on knowing our locale. We're a mile deep and, and an inch wide where a lot of other firms that are in our industry are all over the place, and they just skim the surface, the easy stuff. So, so. Any other questions or?
Yeah, Commissioners, do you have any questions tonight? Commissioner Schultz.
I guess my question is more for Lloyd. Don't we have a contract with ABM for this service?
No, ABM only will tell us how much money we've spent and whether or not it meets the amount, the dollar amount of savings that they've guaranteed in the contract that we had with them to do the facility improvements. What Mr. Tomas does is look at the individual bills, and because of the amount of consumption, you do pay different rates. And so there's a lot of other things.
Can I interrupt, Lloyd? We also included ABM's review in there.
Oh, uh.
And those, those also are, can be misstated as well.
But what he actually does is take. But.
You don't want to go there? Okay.
That's been an interesting journey.
Okay.
Wow, wow, wow.
But this is a different type of information that we'd be getting here, which, as an aside, the annual audit from them is due back the end of this, the end of this month.
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if, if I'm, if I'm reading this correctly, you're, you're all about data analytics in terms of after the fact.
Initially.
Post-consum, post, post-consumption.
Right.
So would you want to look at the ABM audit when we get it next week, next month? So.
I don't know. If it's not a sensitive issue, we, we put that in there for you. I mean, have, have we looked at that for other customers? Yes. It's like, it's like being in the court of law. That's, that's a area that most don't understand, and they have their vendor handing them their results. And I, you know, I wish I could do my, my employee review that way every year and just hand my boss how well I did and have them accept it. But, uh, yeah, we, we see things, inconsistencies in those, and you have to understand the agreements and the nuances of those agreements, the provisions they put in there and how to counter those, and you also have to understand weather normalization, which is really complex. And, and yes, we could help you with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this is more to Lloyd. So are we dropping our contract with ABM?
No, we still have an agreement with them as long as we, the, the agreement with them basically says that we will, they will conduct an annual audit for a fee, and that audit will determine whether or not we are, whether or not we're receiving the guaranteed savings that they built into the contract. So if, and the contract says that we will save $425,000 annually on our utilities. So if we have, so it may be that we save $150,000, and maybe we save nothing, but then they would reimburse us for the amount that we did not save that was supposed to be a part of that contract. So, I mean, that's, that's the agreement we have with them for the life of the lease that we have, which is 15 years.
Thanks.
How much have we saved?
So I think Mr. Kerr just said we should know something at the end of.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes. I did talk with ABM representatives last week, and they indicated that their report would be completed and we would have it by the end of this month. They are behind, and that's why I called them. It was due in June.
In June.
The end of June.
Commissioner Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So let's just say we sign on to have Mr. Tomas give us an analysis, and then the analysis shows that we have a discrepancy between the ABM report and what Mr. Tomas reports. What is in our contract that allows us to refute those results?
I'd have to defer, we, we would have to examine the contract to find that, but what Mr. Tomas is going to tell you if we're paying too.
On there, that's something that, when we started the process with ABM, we had actual, like, code sections that we looked at and followed. There's this very small chapter in the code dealing with these energy-saving contracts. But Mr. Kerr is correct, that contract is easily 150, 160 pages. So I mean, we can get it out, review it, and I can tell you if there's any dispute mechanism. I can't remember that one all the way ahead.
And I guess my question is that if, if we engage Mr. Tomas and we pay that money, and then there's nothing that allows us to do anything in the contract, have we just spent more good money after bad money?
Well.
We work on contingency, so you didn't spend any money on me.
Okay.
Right.
And I'll be, we'll be able to run a quick report on your data and determine what's been saved, and then we could drill down on their information. But, you know, our software, our data analytics for time-based data is second to none. We probably have better stuff than they do.
So you're only going to, we will only pay you on the savings that, not necessarily the savings that you show us, but the savings that.
We achieve. Yeah, we bet on ourselves, and, and, you know, we work smart, so.
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I got to be clear here. So you're working pro bono, basically. So we're.
Contingents.
So, so you identify points of savings, all right? And so at that, you come back to us and you show us discrepancy in whoever we're buying power from, right? So we, we go negotiate with that power company ourselves, or you do that?
We do that. You, you only pay me when you, you have dollars in your hand. Either, either that or a lower bill where I can show you exactly rate for rate, you know, it doesn't matter how much you, oops, how much you consumed, it's your rate. I mean, you know, it's 50 cents per unit for whatever, you know, it is versus 40 cents, and, and you consume less this month, so be it. I mean, and where ABM is, is trying to normalize weather from year to year and show you what's, what's been saved. There, you know, there's, with those kinds of contracts, not, not trying to dwell on that, because really it's the, the utilities that we want to focus on, but the ABM, you need, it's like going to a court of law. If you don't have an attorney by your side, you know, good luck. So at least, you know, you'd have us, and we have technology and know-how, so.
Commissioner Schultz.
So Lloyd, is there any pressing need to do this tonight, or could we table this until we have the ABM results?
Well, not necessarily, except that we're talking about two different things here, okay? You know, obviously, I think Mr. Tomas would like to know so he can move ahead one way or the other, but we are talking about two different things. ABM is, their audit is going to tell us whether we save X number of dollars. What he's going to be doing is taking a look at the rates that we're paying for our electricity and gas and whatnot to determine if we're paying the right rate or if we've been overcharged, and that's simplifying it, but.
Time is money.
Yeah.
Every month that goes by and you're paying the wrong rate, then you're waiting for that ABM to come in. I've been, I've been hearing about that for three or four months, that ABM.
So as far, so as far as the AB, so as far as the ABM information, it's really not going to have a bearing on what we would engage Mr. Tomas to, because that's completely, it's completely separate. Now, he, i- i- if you want him to review their report, their audit and all, I think that would be part of what he's saying he can do for us. But really, what he's doing is something kind of completely different. It's about how much we're paying for the individual utilities, and ABM is saying how much they can save us on a, save us on our, how much they guarantee to save us because of all of the facility approved, improvements that they did. Okay? Does that, is that a little clearer? Okay. So if we could move ahead tonight, you know, it, I, obviously, I think it would be beneficial.
Commissioner Edwards.
Sorry, one more question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is, so if we signed on with you tonight, what's the, what's the timeframe look like? What, what, we have to, if we're not happy with your services, we can terminate at when?
Well, it's a two-year agreement, and during that time, we're reviewing. Yeah, two years. And during that time, we're reviewing your bills monthly, because things could go wrong, rates change, your use changes, and then now you're better off at another rate, so.
Now.
I hope you won't be. I hope you won't be dissatisfied with us. Most of our clients really.
I got, I had to ask.
Mr. Kerr.
I, I just want to make sure that, just make a note that we would need to, you all would need to approve an agreement with them. It would have to be reviewed by the legal staff. And so my intention was if we could, if, if you did agree that you'd like to pursue this, then I could work with Megan and with Mr. Tomas to have the contract reviewed and then come back to you at the next meeting, if possible.
So, yeah, that's. Let's still give us a chance for the ABM contract.
Yes, I mean, you still have an opportunity to kind of look at that and if, you know, so.
Thank you. Any more questions, Commissioners? Thank you, sir, for being here tonight.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Need some direction, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Commissioner, you want, Commissioner Edwards? You making a motion?
I'll make a motion that we move forward with.
ATA.
ATA.
With the ATA proposal. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
I got a motion by Commissioner Edwards and a second by Commissioner Cowan. Any more discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So this is to Megan. So he's working on the contingency and that means, can I explain it to him, get him out of there?
The way I'm understanding, of course, Mr. Tomas, if this is not how you interpret your billing, let me know. But the way I'm understanding is that Mr. Tomas's company is a contingency fee on, here is what we say that you can do year over year. Is it, am I hitting somewhere in the ballpark of?
I can help out.
The contingency fee basis of your contract. So if the county decides to go with your services tonight, you're going to provide us a contract. As far as the financial commitment of the county, what does your contingency fee agreement look like? I haven't reviewed it yet, but I don't want to charge them for reviewing a contract if they don't hire you. But that's not really your contingency fee agreement. I, I need to know what your, Commissioner Henderson's question goes to, what are we going to pay you at the end of the day if we do this? Okay, that's, that was going to be my question.
The, the future, the rates, they vary 3% on average.
Okay.
We ever get to the consumption of management, it's not very much money.
Okay. So you, you said 1.8%. Is that just a general number you found success at? Is that being the? There's a really, the answer to your question, it sounds like it's going to vary based upon what the utility, what you see as savings potential or an area.
I generally don't like to do percentage because I have no idea what's been done and what's changed.
So if you're not going to do a percentage, you want an hourly rate or how, because?
No, I generally don't like to give a patient, is what I'm saying, of savings.
Right. No, I'm going straight to what it's going to cost.
Oh, okay.
That's where I, where I'm going is, yep, yep. 40%.
40% of refunds, you keep 60. We do all the work. We deliver either credit on your bill or check. And then as far as rates go, 40% for two years, you keep 60% during that time. After that, 100% is your, if you invested money, you'd be looking at less than a year payback if you're not investing money early. So we share a two-year span. And at the same time, we're continuing to, you know, manage and watch your bills during that time. Better on costs. It's a, you know, software people, a lot of it.
I have just a follow-up question. This is to Megan. Is it something that, that you think you need to kind of look at?
Oh, yes, sir.
If we don't, and we want to move forward with it, to make sure that we don't end up with another, I'm going to say it, ABM.
Absolutely. If you all give the direction to go forward, what will happen is Sam and I will reach out to Mr. Tomas and get his contract. Then we will, any red lines that we feel are necessary to best protect the county, we go in and then we bring it back here instead of a consent agenda for a full up and down vote.
Yeah. So we want to ask Stan if he would amend his motion, amend his motion to reflect that, that it'd come back before the board for approval of the contract. And, and a quick question, if I may. Sir, how many counties do you provide the service for?
Uh, just counties, healthcare systems, city government. We've done a lot of more private work. Again, pensions remain public, old, reinsurance, and all of this. But more recently, we've been getting into government work, large health care. National healthcare system is third largest non-profit in the country, country.
Okay.
City is not so. For some reason, that area has started grabbing customers. And only now are we really starting to push.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you will.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to amend my motion to, to include bringing the agreement before the board, bringing the ATA agreement back before the board on August 6th for a formal vote and prior to that, a formal review by county attorney.
Yep, thank you. Good morning. Second. It was Commissioner Cowan. Can I, can you second that? Thank you, sir. Commissioner, is any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. It passed 4-1. Commissioner Schultz. Next, Mr. Kerr, another presentation, 911.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight we have, well, let me back up a little, I guess. As you recall, when the upgrades to the 911 system were made part of the 2017 SPOST, as we came to work on the project, we decided that we would bring in a consultant to help us with the RFP process and to write it, to do a needs assessment and to make recommendations to us regarding that and then help develop that RFP for us. They have completed the first phase of the, of the project, which was to establish what the current situation is and to determine what all of the needs of all of the stakeholders are, which would include all of the agencies in the county that operate using or rely on our, rely on the 911 system. And what I've included in your packet, or is in your packet, is the executive summary from that, from the work that they've done. And so I've asked TUSA to be here tonight to address you all, to give you, to talk to you about this, the project so far and to talk to you a little about their findings. I have talked to some of you individually already about the findings and, but they're going to give you some more technical detail and to tell you a little bit about the process so far. So if you'll come on up, I'd appreciate it.
Welcome tonight.
Evening Commissioners. I'm Dean Hart with TUSA Consulting, one of the senior consultants on this project and also the COO for the company. First, thank you for the opportunity to come in and, and address your public safety radio system. Our agenda for tonight is a brief introduction of us, how we approach this project, what sites we visited, what users that we interviewed. We've got three conceptual designs that we want to talk about as well as the budgetary estimates for each one of those designs. So our, our approach, we do a three I's. We investigate, we interview, and we inspect. And we base our report off those. In our site visits, there was approximately 11 sites in the county that we visited. Most of these serve your OpenSky system today as well as your current dispatch center and your new dispatch center. We also visited a New Crown Castle site that was being proposed for the new system. We did interviews with pretty much every public safety agency here in the county as well as the cities. I'm seeing that a lot of those representatives are here tonight on this subject as well. So I appreciate their attendance. As we talked to the users, we really came up with five key issues that they, that they thought was important. Coverage was the number one issue. And we're going to talk about that a little bit more. Audio quality issues, they thought their transmissions have static and sometime muffled and garbled. Coverage can cause those things in a radio system. Subscribers, the mobiles and portables that the public safety officials are using is breaking and not holding up. A lot of it is really end of life in some cases. Interoperability, the ability to communicate with those located outside the county when needs exist. And then training issues, they thought that the current system was difficult to use. So first thing we did was we looked at your current OpenSky radio system and we modeled the coverage off of that. And in the maps that I've got up here, you see green representing mobile. You see places that it's not green, representing effectively no mobile coverage. Mobile is the radio in the vehicle. So in some cases, especially in the southern part of the county, there's cases that even mobile coverage is not existent. And the users identified some of that as we talked with them. Next thing we looked at is portable on the street. As we look at our public safety officials, we all see them carrying a portable on their hip with a speaker mic. So when we looked at that modeling of your current system, you see that those areas in the south and in other places in the counties open up even more. That's identifying that coverage may not be there for an officer or fireman or another public safety official with a portable on the hip. And that is on the street level. Next thing we look at is what we call 6 dB buildings or a single-story wood frame house. You see that coverage even open up more throughout the county with the current system. So we looked at the percentages based on that assessment. When we look at today, Newton County's mobile coverage is approximately 91.5%. Portable on the street on the hip is around 83%. Portable on the hip in a single wood story house or 6 dB building is about 74%. The public safety standard for that coverage should be 95% or greater. So your current system is below the public safety standard. Next thing we did was we looked at the conceptual solutions. Harris and Loudon provided a proposal that was around the budget estimate that you guys have identified in your SPOST. But they also listed some assumptions and some shortfalls that we identified cost on in that solution. I'm going to get into that cost a little bit more here in a minute. We looked at trying to improve that design by Harris Loudon to improve coverage and try to approach the public safety standard. That was the second solution. We'll talk some more about that. And then we looked at the third option was to improve coverage to the public safety standards with the ability to potentially partner with neighboring counties, if possible, to improve interoperability and cost. And we looked at a shared infrastructure and a competitive procurement. The first two options were not competitive procurement, they're sole source. So the first solution done by Loudon, looked at five of your current sites and they did improve portable on the street with those five sites. However, I'm going to show you they did not get to the public safety standard. The next is the map is looking at that solution one and the, what it does for 6 dB buildings or single-story houses. Again, it improved it some, but not to the public safety standard. And in this, we point out some coverage holes. And one of the tools that we use allow us to put this coverage overlay on Google Earth. So when I see a coverage hole, I can drill down on that and I can look and see what either residents or factories or what other buildings may be located within those potential coverage holes. And we see residential coverage in those holes in, in the northern and the southern areas. So solution one, one of the pros that Harris and Loudon gave, it was a phased approach. Some cons was it doesn't really meet the public safety standards. The assumptions would add approximately 840,000 to that cost proposal based on those assumptions. That may be tower engineering, that may be shelter space not available. In some cases, the site didn't have generators. So we took those site visits that we did and put those assumptions into place of what additional costs would come to the county based on that. It's also a sole source procurement. And we were kind of limited, what I call it fixed site selectivity, we were told we could only use certain sites. So we really didn't have any freedom to go outside of those sites that were already identified. Solution two, we looked at trying to improve on what the Harris Loudon proposal had done. Again, we were able to get better portable coverage on the street. And we were able to get somewhat better portable 6 dB housing, but not, still not to the public safety standard. So what was, what was the pros and cons of that? We had some improvements to coverage, still not to the public safety standard. We also looked at replacing the end-of-life subscriber equipment. As we talked to the users and we seen what models they were using, a lot of that is end-of-life. And by doing, looking, replacing end-of-life equipment, we were also looking at reducing long-term maintenance costs. Some of the things we see from vendors today in a competitive procurement is they'll typically give a five-year warranty. So if I can sit there and replace equipment and not have to incur costs on the older equipment to maintain it, there is a cost savings on that. And we, we did that in the detailed analysis. Again, it's a sole source procurement. Coverage is not meeting the public safety standards. And again, we were looking at fixed sites. We didn't have freedom in that case. So solution three, I kind of threw the rules out the door. I sit there and said, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to look at what site it's going to take. Yes, sir?
I'm sorry. Chairman, may I ask a question at this point?
Yes.
Thank you. When you say not allowed to certain sites, what, what does, elaborate on that, what?
When, sir, when we started this job, we were told the sites that we could look at to, to build your radio system.
Does that mean antennas? What does that mean?
Means the fixed tower sites themselves. So for instance, those first 11 sites that we looked at on OpenSky, we were told those were the sites that we had to use to try to make a P25 system or make your new system. And in so, in many cases, when we tried to do that, we could not meet the coverage objectives of the public safety standard.
Okay, so this, I'm still not sure I understand that. But, so in all three options, you used the, the same sites, correct?
In the first two options, I used five of the, in option one, we used five of those 11 sites. In option two, we used seven of those 11 sites. In option three, used some of those sites but came up with new sites. So in, in the case of option three, there was three greenfield sites that would look at producing coverage where it was needed in your cities and in your county. But they would be, when I say a greenfield site, that's building a brand-new tower, brand-new shelter, brand-new backup power. It's not an existing tower in the county, whether leased or, or owned by the county itself.
Okay, so what you're telling me is on the first two options, additional sites were not options?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
That was the guidance we were given by staff in starting this.
Guidance given by who?
By the staff, Mr. Smith.
Okay. Thank you.
Proceed, please.
So we were able to, in this case, in solution three, to create the portable on the street coverage for public safety in the county as well as in the cities. Same way with 6 dB buildings. So what was the, this conceptual design was we did meet coverage for public safety standards. We replaced the end-of-life subscriber equipment, reduced long-term subscriber costs. Options two or three are that's the same methodology. We looked at sharing a network core to improve interoperability. Newton County kind of sits in a unique position that they've got one vendor that's got a core. Newton County kind of sits in a unique position that they've got one vendor that's got a core in one county, and they've got another vendor that's got cores in two other counties. So you've got opportunity to share infrastructure with a neighboring county. What's that save you? About 750,000 right off the top of not having to buy that computer core. And it also improves interoperability because now we're looking at building a regional-type system instead of a single system only in Newton County. By doing the shared network core to also improve interoperability, it reduced infrastructure maintenance costs with a shared core, and this was looked at being done under a competitive procurement. The cons is going to be the budget concerns within the county. We're keenly aware of that. So here's a key coverage summary that I think is important. When we look at your current system, I already talked about the percentages. 91% mobile, 83% portable on the street, 74% portable in a single-story house. Loudon proposal improved that. So 11 Open Sky sites, we can improve that coverage with five P-25 sites. We've got mobile coverage up to the public safety standard, but portable is still 90% and 81% respectively. With solution two, we were able to get mobile near 100%. We actually raised portable coverage to 92% on the street, 85% in a six dB building. Solution three, 99% mobile, 99% portable, and we were able to come up with portable in building six dB at 96.8%. One of the other key things that I think is important here is the city coverage summary. So we looked at increasing coverage in the county, but we also looked at trying to maintain the coverage in the cities within your county. The Open Sky system actually, in some cases, has given some pretty good coverage in Covington, Mansfield, and Porter Dale. Oxford's below the standard. Loudon proposal actually reduced some coverage in those cities, improved it in Oxford, but it reduced it in Covington, Mansfield, and Porter Dale. The conceptual two, we improved a little bit of coverage in Covington, we got it back up to where it was at, as well as Mansfield. Porter Dale was reduced, in Oxford, we actually was able to increase. Solution three, we was able to get that coverage up near 99% at least portable on the street or portable six dB buildings. Porter Dale, we still probably look at tweaking that a little bit. We got up to 94% in there. So the biggest question is, what does all that cost? The Harris Loudon proposal, the infrastructure piece that they were going to give was $3.7 million of that 7.6. The subscribers that could be done in a phased approach are around four point, I think they're around 4.4 million. So you were looking at that as a total cost in that solution one. 3.7 would get you a radio system that still does not meet the public safety needs, in our opinion. You could phase the subscribers in over time, you're still going to have to spend some money over time to do that. One of the other downsides to solution one is if I phase the subscribers in over time, I've got to maintain a new P-25 system, and I've got to maintain an Open Sky system at the same time. So there's additional costs in there for the long-term maintenance. So the other thing that we like to do, we call total cost of ownership. The 15-year cost of maintaining the radio system is an additional seven point, that'd be about 6.8 million over that 15-year period. So that comes out to about $400,000 to $500,000 a year in maintenance, I believe, is what the math does. Solution two, we did coverage improvements on the Harris Loudon proposal. It was two additional sites, but we also, at that point, recommended replacing the subscribers. That comes to 12.2, a 15-year cost of about 19.2, so about $7 million total in that 15-year for that additional two sites. Solution three, we talked about solution two being seven sites, and we talked about solution three being 10 sites to actually make the public safety coverage. You sit there and think to yourselves, I've got three more sites, how do I come less cost? Because that's a competitive procurement. So at that point, the vendors are out there competing against each other to provide the coverage at a public safety standard at a reduced cost. And our experiences show that. Our experiences show the public safety vendors are offering up longer warranties on the infrastructure as well as the subscribers, and we see a reduced cost, not only in the upfront cost, but in the long-term cost. So we project about $11.2 million for solution three and an additional six point, what am I at, about 6.6 over a 15-year period to maintain the system. So the next steps is to identify the options we want to do and develop a spec around that. I'd be happy to answer any questions the mission may have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions tonight? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Back on page six, oh, I'm sorry, the solution number one, Harris Loudon proposal, because I'm sorry, the slide just before that, conceptual solutions. Those assumptions in item number one, can you run through what those assumptions are?
Let me pull up my details, and I can tell you that, sir. So as an example, as we did the site visits at Snapping Shoals, your current system is located in that shelter, but that shelter is full. So we were projecting 225,000 to build a new shelter at that site to house the new equipment. The old shelter would not be able to house the new equipment. The same for Crown Castle at the Mount Zion site, a shelter there as well. In the Loudon proposal, they proposed moving a shelter from another site, but that site's got to stay on the air and running for public safety. You can't sit there and move in the middle of the night, because then I create a big coverage hole. So we made the assumption that that new site up north at Mount Zion would need a new shelter as well, as well as it needed generator to build that new site. The Rocky Plain site where you currently have a equipment on would need a generator. It does not currently have a generator. And then we also looked at engineering. Anytime I'm looking at putting new antennas on a tower, I've got to do a load study to make sure that that tower will hold that new load. So there's cost. We typically are looking at anywhere from 10,000 to 25,000 according to the type of site for that engineering. And then we also looked at, your sites weren't in bad shape from a grounding perspective, but they needed some updates, so we added budget to do grounding updates to those sites as well.
So from, speaking of the generators, so the generators have never been there, correct?
No, no. There's no generator at that Rocky Plain site today. The Mount Zion site that was going to replace a water tower that was south of it has a generator, but again, we view that public safety site's got to stay on the air while you would be constructing the new site.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is very helpful and very thorough. I would like to go back to the end of your slides where you talk about where we're headed now, or the one that shows, that one, the pricing summary. Okay, so we have a little over $3 million in the SPOST, and that was a 2017 SPOST, so that's a six-year SPOST, correct? So if we are to move forward with solution three, which to me, I just can't imagine that we would invest this kind of money and not get the coverages up to the public safety standard. I just, I mean, why spend money if you're not going to do that? That just seems like spending, we're wasting money. So is there a way to phase solution three until we were able to get to the next SPOST, which would be in 2023?
I typically do not like to recommend that, because if you start building a system that's only giving partial coverage, you're not going to have happy users, because they still have a radio system that's not working. And where do I build that? Do I build the sites around the cities? Do I build that sites around the county? You know, who do I pick first in a phased approach? So we typically don't recommend that. The other side of this, too, in a competitive environment, is the vendors typically will give creative funding options as well that may allow you guys to do this over time, where some of your budgets you have today could sit there and carry through and get it started, and then future SPOST budgets or other budgets that you identify could then pay the backside of this in a lease-type or a bonded-type program.
So do you have, will you have recommendations of how to go about that if we were to determine that we wanted to move forward with solution three, but we are woefully short of that money?
What we would propose is put those funding-type options into the vendors and let them come back with solutions that we would then make a recommendation on.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And once again, it's to Megan, and Megan in-law, say, could we do a bond or something? You know, I'm just asking.
We would have to look at what exactly the bonded funds would be used for. It is not unusual in the least that these big-type things are bonded projects, so I can look at that and get you some guidance. The only thing I do want to be cautious of, I mean, there's discussion of us doing a T-SPOST to get more transportation dollars. We don't want to hurt our bond rating. It's been improving, so we don't want to overtake out money, but yes, that's typically how people or how counties put together that.
Absolutely. It just came to my mind was that I agree with Commissioner Schultz. Here's something we agree on, but we agree on this is the fact that, you know, we need the coverage. What good is spending money if we can't get the coverage for the entire county as much as we can?
Commissioner Schultz.
So I think that all of us could agree that public safety is our most, one of our most important, if not the most important function that we have, and we don't want anyone in any part of the county to feel that they are not protected. And to look at those coverage maps and know that a substantial part of the county is not being protected in terms of coverage is really distressing to me. And I just, I don't think in good conscience I can sit up here and say, well, I'm willing to go with a substandard solution. So I would, my view is that we need to give you some direction to come back with some creative financing solutions. I just, I know after doing all the stakeholder assessments for the strategic plan, public safety was, that's one of our strategic action items, is that the county wants to feel safe and that the public is willing to pay for that, and I just feel like we need to have the best solution of how to go about paying for that.
Ms. Cur.
I just wanted to say that there are some options here. You know, there is the possibility to bond it, but we would want to make sure we would be able to cash flow, something like that. There's a possibility of leasing the equipment or leasing to own. Some of the finance options that the contractor or supplier would be willing to work with. I think we would also want to talk with our partners in the 911 system for, to see what their willingness would be to help us get to where we need to be, because as you can see from the, from all of the coverage information, one of the problems that we have is inside of buildings, which is a major problem, particularly for places. And this recommendation did include a couple of the major buildings we have a problem with, which is the mill down in Porter Dale in Takeda, because we do have some issues about communications inside those buildings. So those are considerations. So I think there's a lot of things that we can do, we just have to go through and explore all of those ideas, and in working together, I think we can come up, you know, with something. What I can do is bring something, you know, some options back to the board for you to consider on how to move ahead with being able to fund this. I think you're right, I would agree. Even though it is a substantial investment, it's an investment we really need to make, and it would provide, that's not only the safety of the public, but it's also the safety of our public safety employees who are going into buildings not knowing, you know, what's going on and not being able to communicate. So we'll try to work out some options for you all to consider.
If I could, just to add one thing to this so you guys understand the bigger picture, the procurement process for a radio system of this type takes about six months from the time the RFP is issued to a negotiated contract. To build a radio system of this size for this size of county is at least 18 months. So you're looking at about a two-year process upon the time we release the RFP to get to a accepted radio system.
Can I get a formal motion, please?
I'll be happy to make the motion, because I really feel like if we don't move forward, we're negligent. And so if you could help me with how you want me to state the motion so that we get exactly the right language.
I would like to make a motion to approve a 911 communications agreement with TUSA Consulting to be approved when taken back to the board for a full vote. That'll get us.
And how about options for?
Payment, yeah.
Options for funding.
Yeah, that would work too.
Funding option. So moved.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
Just one last question. So you're going to be kind of in the mix?
Yes, and if you would, Mr. Chairman, could you reread or could Ms. Martin reread that?
Can we make the motion that?
The motion was, I didn't quite catch all of the motion, that's why I wanted to make sure.
I'm sorry.
Okay, now I'm just trying to think about how we would phrase that. Like a make a motion to approve the county manager working in conjunction with TUSA Consulting and the county attorney to bring a proposal including financial options back to the board no later than August 23rd.
If there was, if I may, Ms. Chairman, I'd like to add one thing to that, and that is, I think we need to reference solution number three here as the solution that we would like to work towards the financing of, because that ensures that we are going to have an open and competitive process for getting the system.
So that motion would then include the financing options for selecting item three in the proposal.
Good with that.
Thank you.
So moved? So moved?
Yes, well, I mean, because I'm originally making a motion, so I'm amending it.
You got it.
That's what she raised most recently.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Any more discussion? Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Lloyd, have we decided where we're going to put this 911 center? It would be, currently, we're using Fire Station 22 as our, and I believe that that would be the appropriate place to put that, because it is a suitable location.
In the timeframe that he's mentioned, will we have it retrofitted to be a 911 center?
It's actually, is operational now as a 911 center.
Okay. Anyone else? Any more discussion, Mr. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. First, I have a question, and it may be more for Lloyd. Will the 225,000 consultation fee for TUSA being, will that include the issuing of the RFP and the implementation, should we go with option three through implementation?
There was a total contract price, and I believe was 319 was the total. That may be. Um, uh, that may be, I'm not sure what you're looking at there. I don't have that in front of me.
Well, I just, I made some notes.
Oh, it could, yeah, that could be the remainder on their contract. Um, I, I, but yes, the, um, their contract calls for us or for them to prepare an RFP and then help us through the selection process, um, and everything that goes along with that. I can get you those exact prices on that, but yes, they're under contract to do all of that work.
Through the installation?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And I, and I have a concern, um, with the, with the motion as stated, um, we're, we're gonna, tonight, we're making a decision on, on option three in, in the last part of that motion that, that we just included. So that means all other options are off the table as of tonight.
If we can get funded, if we can find a way to fund it. Is that correct?
That's, that's what I was trying to.
Us, so. Well, I'm, I'm sorry.
Mr. Kerr? I'm sorry.
I think I interrupted the commissioner, so.
No, I, I, I would agree that if, if, if we can find suitable funding, not just funding, but suitable funding. So option three is going to be our only option if, if we go with this, this, this particular, um, motion tonight. So the other two options can never be brought back on the table.
Well, we can further amend the motion if we, if you'd like to do so, so that we could be clear on, um, to include all solutions coming back or solution three only. We, we could, you can make it way.
I would like to restate the motion to include all three options.
Okay. Motion was made by?
I'm fine with that.
That, okay, so we have an amended motion on the floor to amend the motion to include the availability of all solutions as we look towards financing options. And then Commissioner Cowan, were you the second on that? Who was?
Mason.
Mason was the second. Are you comfortable with the amended motion?
There we go.
Can we have Lloyd before we?
If I could, hate to throw a wrench in the works here, but options one and two include a proposal that was not competitively bid. So I would recommend that you not include those, um, in the, in this. Uh, option number three is an estimation of what we think that the system's going to cost. It could be a little less, it could, in, in reality, it could be a little bit more. But the, all of the infrastructure that has been recommended in that, uh, in proposal three will give us the adequate coverage that we need in order to, um, provide, uh, those, um, that will exceed the ninety-five percent coverage rate, um, that is the standard for public service.
Well, and if I could, Commissioner, it, option three does not preclude the vendor that proposed option one and two either. It just puts them in a competitive environment with the other two vendors that could bid this technology.
Okay, uh, thank you for that. Um, well, I think, I think now's the time for me to go ahead and state that originally, I, and I forget how long ago this, the, the original, uh, no-bid proposal was brought to us, the scope of this project was through three-point-seven-five million and, and now, and, and previous boards, not this board, previous boards voted years ago not to upgrade our, um, our communication system. And I believe now we're paying exponentially, we're going to have to pay exponentially for it looks like a twelve-million-dollar system to me. And, you know, I, you know, unless we got a, a million-dollar tree somewhere, we're, we're going to have to, this will be passed along to the taxpayers at some point. Now, all that said, Commissioner Schultz, you didn't fall on deaf ears when you said, um, uh, public safety is probably priority number one for our citizens, and I agree with that. I just didn't want to limit us tonight with a solution, um, especially this early in the process. And it may be that solution three is our only, our only solution, I just don't know. Um, but we haven't heard from Harris or Loudon to counter any of the things that we've heard here, not anyway, to, to maybe talk about some solutions or some of the assumptions or, you know, contradict some of the assumptions that were made. And I don't doubt, I don't doubt the expertise standing, this gentleman standing in front of us, I, I don't. But, but our fiduciary responsibility is also to look at what we can do at the most affordable price while protecting the lives of all those people in the back row and serving our citizens at the same time. So I just want to make sure we, we have a robust approach and a, a holistic approach and not limit ourselves tonight by, by that type of, that type of motion. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. His, I, I think what it's really about is, is about our citizens here in Newton County, it's about our first responders and having the coverage that we need, you know, in order to protect our citizens, you know, you know, we want to make sure that if you're the top of a building or the highest building in Newton County, if you need help, you can call them and somebody will hear you and come and try and help you. And so, um, I think if it, if it's in the future, if it saves just one life, it's worth twenty million dollars to me. If it's in the future, if it, if it, if it saved two lives, I mean, it paid for itself. Let's not start thinking about dollars and cents, let's start thinking about the safety of our citizens. And I think they will agree with us one-hundred percent, you know, whether, whether you are Republican or Democrat, if that's what you want to call yourself, it's all right because we're, it's about our citizens and the coverage that we need and the system that we've been needing for years. Yes, I was on the prime, the prime boards, but see, we, we just didn't think in terms of, of how long it would take. Something that maybe cost three million dollars ten years ago, now it's about twelve million dollars because everything has went up. And so there was one, there was not a, there was a factor that we didn't think about in the past. So I think, uh, I could, I agree with our county manager. I think he has looked at it well, and I think this, and I agree with Commissioner Schultz. Let us not change on what's, what's right for our citizens. I mean, come on, y'all.
So, make sure we get it right. Since Lloyd said that one and two was not competitively bid, that, that's great. So we need to go back to Commissioner Schultz and get you to amend your motion back if you, so.
I'm, so, we're going to amend it back to?
If, to, to the original motion.
The original motion, three.
If you desire, if you desire, sir.
Okay, so what my objective is, is I want, um, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Dean Hart.
I want Mr. Hart to come back with a, with some suggestions for how we fund solution three. I'm not saying we are voting on solution three. I want funding recommendations for solution three.
Yeah.
So that's the motion that I want. So I would like, um, uh, county manager Kerr and Ms. Martin and Mr. Hart to work together to give, to bring back suggestions on how we would fund solution three.
That's your original motion.
That's my motion.
Yep, can I get that second again?
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. A motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion? All in favor? Passes five to zero, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the, well, we'll give y'all a chance to get. Next on agenda is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity we allow citizens to come up and make, um, comments on any topic. You, you allow three minutes to do so. If you would, please come tonight and state your name. Citizen comments. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sarah Doby, one thirty-five Hunter Ridge Drive. I want to express my concern to this board. I expressed it to another board last week. This has to do with the pollution issues. I am really concerned about any reliance on the national EPA today to give anything in terms of accurate, sensible, scientific information as they have, as the current occupant of the White House has fired most of the scientists in the country and the EPA rules every week are diminished again and again. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman, Commissioners, Madam County Clerk, Madam Attorney. My name is Gladstone Nicholson. I live at four-nine-five Lakeside Circle, Covington. I've been sitting here tonight and I was a little bit uneasy. Maybe I could find some other adjectives, but I'll go with that for now. When I looked at the agenda, I could not figure out what was on the agenda that I, as a citizen, could say, hey, I have a point on upcoming items. They were so vaguely written, I had no idea what they were. I'm not sure if it's purposely done or it was done by a vote, but for some reason I get the feeling that the agendas as they're being written, they're just vague. Unless a citizen has what, you know, the Commissioners have, they really have very often no idea what a topic entails. So that's just one concern. Another concern is, tonight we talked about ABM. We talked about ABM some months ago, and for some reason, I got the impression ABM was a super company with a great product. Tonight, I got evidence that there is some second thoughts by a, for, for want of a better, we're a competing vendor. He says that what he does and what ABM does are different things, but the bottom line that they both are is that one is a current vendor and one is a vendor applicant. And we also had a situation with, uh, where a settlement had been done because of a personal action some months ago. All this costs money. And I just think we ought to do better as far as how we prioritize or perhaps vision what we want to do. Maybe all different things that we have will help us along that way, but even the one with the twenty-five thousand dollar for the, um, uh, DCA consultant, you know, that was riddled with misgivings or missteps back when it was being done. So the idea here is we have a lot of things that are coming back from the past, and I'd hate to see things from now present in the future coming back to cause us grief and unfortunately more money. So I just think we ought to see how we can do better as a board so that we can avoid some of these things. And I'm not smart enough to make suggestions tonight, but I'm sure you can, you know, I hope you'll look into it anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else would like to make comments tonight? Thank you. That's it for citizens' comments tonight. Um, Commissioner Cowan?
I don't have anything.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Henderson?
Um, thank you, Ms. Chair. I, I just want to say this, you know, um, it's, it's been a lot of talk about board and, and, and what's happening and the way the wind is blowing into a little small community called Sellers Grove, which, um, I am the elected, uh, county official. And not only does they have to endure that, they also have to do just another chemical spill or something in, in the earth from the plant that they took, who had a few years back when Keith Ellis was chairman, uh, wanted to go and dig holes and see how, how the gas had been moving in, in the road. And, and we said that, and the board agreed that we weren't going to let them dig holes in the road unless they give a, a report to the citizens over there. You know, it's, it's, it's sad that we're moving back in time instead of moving forward in time. It's bad that we're allowing our citizens on the other end of town to be really mistreated, to really have a, a high rate of cancer. He said, well, how do I know? Because the people who had passed, I asked them, what's your, what's your husband die from? I said, cancer. Uh, what's your wife die from? I said, cancer, high rate of cancer. And we, uh, as a community, we seem like we just, just turned our head to them. It used to be when one, when one portion of our community hurt, we all stepped up and stood up and said, let's do what we can to help this, this family or these families. And it would be nice if we all, as Christians, like people said that we are, would go back to those same values. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Schultz. Uh, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I want to take this opportunity to, um, acknowledge that I was honored to represent Newton County, um, at NACO, which is our National Association of Counties, um, last week. And, um, it was an amazing event, learned a lot, connected with a lot of individuals, really focusing on economically developing our county. And I think that's something that, from what I see, this board really strategically moving towards. We have a lot of work to do, but I believe we are heading in that direction. Um, as a matter of fact, I have personally, um, taken on this as being a passion of mine and, um, have submitted to be nominated for, um, the Community and Economic and Workforce Development Steering Committee, um, on a national level. And so my objective is to really be able to represent Newton County, uh, not just on a local level, not just on a state level, but to go and gather national resources for us, um, that we may not be aware of at the present time. And so I'm excited about even becoming a part of that steering committee, to be able to work with some legislation that deals with a lot of those different areas that's really going to help us develop, uh, on a local level. Uh, as a matter of fact, it was really astounding to even kind of see one of my. As a matter of fact, it was really astounding to even kind of see one of my...